... One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steen, Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Present.
Bishusta. Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one, we need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item two is a motion approving the minutes from October 21st, 2019, and October 22nd, 2019. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Three is recognitions and awards, and I do have a proclamation to read. Four, well, I'll read it. Whereas Zanta International is a global organization of professionals empowering women worldwide through service and advocacy with nearly 30,000 members worldwide in 63 countries. Whereas Zanta International is celebrating its centennial anniversary on November 8th, 2019, chartered in Buffalo, New York on November 8th, 1919, and the Zanta Club of Austin, Minnesota had celebrated its 68th anniversary on January 25, 2019, chartered January 9th, 1950. And whereas the members of Zanta International and the Zanta Club of Austin, Minnesota envision a world in which women's rights are recognized as human rights and every woman is able to achieve her full potential. In such a world, women have access to all resources and are represented in decision-making positions on an equal basis with men. In such a world, no woman lives in fear of violence. And whereas in addition to improving the lives of women and girls around the world and in Austin area, the Zanta Club of Austin's local service activities financially support projects to empower women and girls to understand their rights and realize their full potential. And whereas the Zanta Club of Austin, Minnesota, through its annual nut sales and annual Women of Achievement fundraiser, provide assistance to women and girls in transition at Crime Victims Resource Center, Mission 21, and More Than Pink. Whereas the Zanta Club of Austin, Minnesota funds scholarship programs and support for non-traditional female students, as well as Jane M. Klausman Women in Business Scholarship and the Young Women in Public Affairs Award. And whereas the service and advocacy provided by the Zanta Club of Austin, Minnesota will continue to have a positive impact on our community and citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Tom Steen, Mayor of the City of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby declare November 2019 as Zanta Month in the City of Austin and call upon citizens of Austin and the greater Austin area to render support to members of this organization and to make themselves aware of Zanta International, whose members are committed to improving the lives of women and girls locally and internationally. And the Zanta Club does do a lot. They asked for a proclamation, and I made sure that they knew it was going to get read tonight. I think Glenn is here to talk on a different issue, but I know your wife is involved. She's at Zanta tonight, right?
Yes.
So it's a good club and it's a good organization. It's a lot of good for Austin. Number four, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Under public hearings. Number five is a public hearing for the renewal of currency exchange license for Tienda Y... And...
Yes, Mayor. This is a currency exchange license public hearing for Tienda, Teguera, Guerrero. We have to do this for the state of Minnesota every year for them to renew their currency license. They've had their license since 2013, and we've received no complaints or had no issues with it, so we would recommend your approval.
Counsel, any input? Comments? If not, we need...
This is a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing. Anybody here wants to address the counsel on this issue? If not, we need a resolution approving or denying the exchange license renewal.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under bid opening and award, number six is resolution receiving bids for residential building demolition. Ms. Wallace.
On October 24th, the city received three bids for demolition of four hazardous structures. The low bid was $27,300 by Generation X Construction LLC. They're out of Rushford, Minnesota. The... I would recommend that the city approve that bid.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Avoiding the bid, correct? I'm sorry, I should have said that. Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Ah, Seville Lord was going to be here for number seven. I don't know if...
Nope.
We can move on to eight, until she gets here. Number eight is a... It's a... We've seen a couple of motions reviewing an ordinance to amend the future land use plan for a mixed high-density residential to commercial and rezone a property from R2 multifamily residential to B2 commercial for the property located at 1500 Seventh Avenue Northwest. Ms. Wallace, can you explain this in a couple of... Half a minute or less?
I'll try. During the October 15th, 2019, meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a request from Curtis Sorensen regarding a property located at 1500 Seventh Avenue Northwest to amend the future land use as noted and rezon the property from multifamily to commercial. The action was requested to accommodate a car sales business. The property has existed as a car sales business from about 1989, when a change of non-conforming use was granted, from a plumbing business to car sales, to about 2017, when the car sales use terminated due to inactivity for more than a year, and that is by ordinance and state statute. The... Under change of non-conforming use, the car sales could not be expanded. Therefore, the owner at the time, Bob Helmers, petitioned the city to rezon the subject property and an adjacent lot to commercial. Helmers petitioned... I had records of two petitions for rezon. He says that he had rezoned three times or requested three rezones. But in any event, the rezonings were denied at the time. Sorensen recently made an agreement to purchase the property as a car sales lot. He was unaware that it was not properly zoned for that business and that the non-conforming use for car sales had terminated. Due to the location size of the parcel, the only option for the petitioner was to try to amend our future land use map in our comprehensive plan and rezon the property to B2 commercial, apply for a variance for setback from the residential zone because the lot is less than 50 feet from residential district, and then obtain a conditional use permit. So this is the first step by amending the future land use plan and rezoning to allow him to continue with the other steps that would be necessary in order to have a legal use, a permitted use on that lot as a car sales business. The proposed location has remained mostly unchanged over the past decades. The houses still remain in the former car lot is the only visible business in that area. The two adjacent property owners appeared at the meeting to the property owners to the west of the lot. On the northwest side is Mr. Helmers, and on the southwest is Thiessen. Thiessen objected to the proposed rezon primarily due to nuisance issues, and Helmers wanted his property also rezoned, so if this rezoning is successful, he would ask for the same for his property. And in the event that his rezon failed, he wanted... He wished to object to the petitioner's rezon request. Mr. Helmers had included a letter from his attorney, which is included in the materials. The current owner, Mr. Medgarden, spoke in support of the petitioner, and the petitioner provided a list of neighbors who he indicated did not object when he approached them about the request. He did indicate that it would be car sales versus other commercially allowed uses. The Planning Commission, after hearing from all parties and staff and after thorough consideration, made the following recommendation. With six members present, they recommended to deny the amendment to the future land use plan and the rezoning request, six to zero. They primarily were concerned about the broad uses in the B2 district, and there's really no way to narrow those uses to just a car sales lot, which previously existed. So they found that the proposed land use change was not consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use plan, as a mixed use in our commercial retail district, and that the B2 commercial district was not compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning. And then I included considerations for you to review, as well as the considerations that the Planning Commission looked into.
Okay.
Wanted to say considered, but anyway.
And it was... Okay, and it was denied by the Planning Commission?
It was denied by the Planning Commission. I see that all of the people who were at the Planning Commission and spoke are here tonight as well.
We're going to give them a chance. But Mr. Byrum, could you give us a short... I saw... I watched the Planning Commission meeting, and you did a good job explaining the legal issues involved in this.
Yeah, so when a city passes its first zoning ordinance, which occurred in Austin in the 70s, existing land uses that are not in compliance with that ordinance are called non-conforming uses. And the purpose and point of that is that if you force existing uses to comply with a new zoning ordinance, you may be subject to takings claims, meaning that you've taken property rights away from those owners by stopping them from using their property the way they had historically used it. So a non-conforming use is a technical term for a use that existed at the time we passed a zoning ordinance that didn't comply with what we would like to see in that area, what the long-term public policy and planning preferences are for that property. And non-conforming uses, the intent of them is to, over time, discourage or reduce the amount of non-conformity to eventually achieve conformity with your zoning ordinance. So what happens sometimes is a non-conforming use, in this case, when it started, it was a... What was it?
When Mr. Helmers bought it, I believe it was a plumbing business.
Yeah, plumbing business of some sort. You can apply for a change in non-conforming use, which is to come before the Planning Commission or the counsel and say, "I have this plumbing business, non-conforming use, but I'd like to change that to a car dealership." And the purpose and point of that is, or the way that the decision-maker is supposed to approach that is, is the new non-conforming use less outside of our normal rules or more outside of our normal rules? If less, then we should encourage that because we're moving towards conformity. When a non-conforming use is abandoned for a period of 12 months, the law says now that owner has voluntarily given up that use. It's no longer the current use, so they wouldn't have a takings claim that you're taking something away. So after 12 months, it just becomes a situation where that property should comply with the zoning code. So it's a few years ago, there was a stopping of selling used cars on that lot for a period of 12 months, which means the non-conforming use expired just by the operation of law. So what you have now is a new potential owner who would like to resurrect that non-conforming use or is looking to return to the car dealership. And we're in a situation where the non-conforming use no longer applies, doesn't give us a lot of options there. And so the proposal is to rezon the property to a more commercial use rather than its current zoning, which is intense residential use. And so what you need to think about there is that once you change from an R2 designation to a B2 designation, you're not limited to just car dealerships. You now are open to every other business use that's listed in the B2 zoning classification, which includes a variety of different business uses there, stores and restaurants and other types of businesses that may have impacts that are different than car dealerships. And I think that's what concerned the Planning Commission when they thought about it, is if you watch the tape, I think there were multiple comments that maybe a car dealership wasn't something they were all that concerned about, but if you rezon it, it's now open to anything. And so if the car dealership doesn't work out in a couple of years, someone else could decide to redevelop it in some other business use, and that would be completely allowed. So you're now faced with a narrow piece of property that is on 14th Street, that is surrounded on all sides with residential uses, pretty close on the west side, of course, cross 14th Street on the east side, residential uses. There's the college just to the north of this property. There's apartments just to the north and east of this property. But there's not a lot of business activity until you get closer to the interstate or closer to Oakland Avenue. And before you, I guess, is just the question, does this B2 zoning designation fit that location in that neighborhood? And the decision is really changing both comprehensive plan, which is our future land use map, that says that this should be retained as high-density residential, to saying that this should be more commercial, and then specifically changing zoning classification to a B2 designation.
So the only way they can keep the car dealership is if we rezon and if... Okay.
So I just have a clarifying question for Craig. The way I'm understanding this is it's an example of our zoning laws working exactly the way we wrote them to, so that those who were there and continuously operating were grandfathered in, but once that stopped happening, we said, "Now you have to come back into the fold and follow our comprehensive plan." Now, reasonable people can disagree if 12 months is the right amount of time, and average people have no idea of all of these zoning regulations that we use as a city to operate. But this is a fairly unique set of circumstances, is that fair to say? Where, in my experience on the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was usually a middle road where we could compromise and give everybody a little bit of what they wanted, but these... This set of circumstances leaves us with only rezoning, which is a now and forever it's rezoned, and we don't get another chance to put conditions or parameters on it if the property's sold. Is that correct?
Yes, that's generally correct, is that right now, the alternative to a car dealership would be redeveloping the property in some way consistent with an R2 designation, which admittedly may be difficult because of the size and shape of the lot and the fact that it is on a busy street. And I would think that it's not very attractive for new single-family development and maybe too small for multifamily development, but those are practical concerns, not really legal concerns. With a car dealership, you have not only that it doesn't fit the zoning classification, so you need to change that, but even when you put a car dealership into a B2 district, there's supposed to be setbacks from residential properties that this property's too small to meet, so you'll need variances to be granted and other concessions essentially to make it fit. But yes, you're in a... It's a fairly unique situation where there doesn't appear to be a great option. And the question ultimately is, you know, is the public at large, the neighborhood, all the other people with their property interests need to bend because there's a piece of property that is a problem uniquely? Or do we go the other direction and leave this piece of property with limited options?
I would just add that we do have other zoning districts that may fit that parcel to allow some use, but it wouldn't allow the automotive sales. So that's why we went with the B2, because that's the business that he wants to engage in.
So for instance, we could rezon to a more restrictive zoning and a different type of business. We have to get away from the residential zoning, but we could have a more restrictive business zoning and a different type of business, not a car lot.
So between...
That's an option for the property owner.
Correct.
Okay.
So between the R2 zone, the multifamily residential, and the B2 commercial, there's RO, which is residential office, and that's the zoning that the university is located or exists under, and that allows different kinds of office uses and various less commercial activities. And the B1 is pretty narrow. That might not work as well, but...
Who sets the zoning ordinance? Like, in theory, could we create our own zoning ordinance? I know that opens up a whole Pandora's Box, so I'm not suggesting, I'm just...
The local zoning ordinance is actually created by the council and is passed as all the other ordinances, and it's under review currently for potential future modification to review what needs to be updated and what may need to be changed. So long-term, there's a possibility of a different zoning classification. So you have... You're always going to have, no matter how you construct a zoning ordinance, you're going to have to worry about friction that's created by intense uses next to less intense uses. And so you can create 1,000 different zoning classifications if you want, but at some point, there's still going to be someone who wants to put a more commercial use or an industrial use too close to residential uses and create that friction. It is something that is, long-term, within the control of the council to modify its ordinance. We just have what we have in the ordinance right now to work with tonight.
Well, it's going to impact some people, so I think we should hear from everybody if they'd like. Curtis, why don't we start with you, and we'll go from you to Glenn. Mr. Helmers will work our way back, and then Glenn, after that, will have you come up.
That sounds great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. You guys did very well, Holly and Craig, explaining everything.
How big is your name and address?
Curtis Sorensen, 303 27th Drive Northwest. You both did very well explaining everything. I'll be very brief. Those are pretty much all my points. I don't even need my notes. So really, all I have to tell you is, in the whole neighborhood, there was one that was against it, Mr. Thiessen. You will hear from him. I'm more than happy to work with him on the problems that he had with the old tenants and improve the relationship between us, put a sign on the boulevard, smaller vehicles, keeping the side off... Vehicles off the sidewalk, the snow and different things. He has legitimate concerns, and I'm more than happy to address them. It is a very unique property with the planning and zoning. Everyone said exactly what was stated. They were okay with a car lot, but what could it be after being a car lot? And my response to that is, we all know the property. We all drive by it. It's extremely busy. I can't be there for five minutes without somebody texting me and calling me, "Hey, what are you doing there? Did you buy that? I heard rumors." So given the unique size, skinny, long, curb-to-curb, I don't see many other businesses working there. And as far as redeveloping it, I own 21 properties in Austin as well, for rental properties. As far as redeveloping it, like Craig stated, the money, I mean, you'd have to go three or four stories high, and then you're going to be struggling with parking. That's probably not going to be a good neighbor for Mr. Thiessen either. I think it should be a car lot, like it always has been. I hope we can get this done today. Any questions from any of you guys? Anything I can address?
You did talk to the neighbors, too. You did a good job.
Yes, I canvassed the whole neighborhood within 500 feet. I found 29 people. I have 29 signatures for, a few not home, a few not English, and one, Mr. Thiessen, was against it. And I understand his concerns. Very, very happy to work with him on his concerns.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Sorensen? Okay. Mr. Medgarden?
Thank you very much.
Can you give us your name and where you live?
Glenn Medgarden. I live out in Royal Manor, which is 2715 Fifth Street Northeast, which used to be in the county, but now we're in the city.
Congratulations.
You know what it cost me, Tom? You wouldn't say that. The privilege of hooking up, plus the cost of hooking up. I originally bought this property from the Pleal family. I was approached to them, and I did have another use for it. Verizon Wireless had expressed a desire for me to buy it, and they were going to move in there. Verizon Wireless.
When did you buy it?
Oh, Tom, my memory is so bad. About a year and a half.
I could ask Mr. Helmers. I remember when he... We remember when he had it.
Yeah, well, I mean, it hasn't been a car lot for like 29 years. I mean, if I would have realized that this reverting to the old zoning was going to happen, I would have put some cars in the south end of it, but that's the reason I originally bought it. Right now, I mean, you know, if, like you say, residential, I suppose we could put a couple of double whites in there, couldn't we? One on each end? Turning it to trailer trash? But anyway, it's up to the council. I mean, you know, you deny it, then we're going to have another empty building. And right now, you just acquired three more out, maybe we were last week when Double K closed, you got SEMA that's closed. We have enough empty buildings around town right now without adding more, and I don't think it's the council's intent and purpose to have empty buildings around town. That's why I think it should be rezoned for a car lot. I think Kurt would take a good care of it.
Who owns the property now? You or Mr. Sorensen?
Currently, he bought it from me on a contract.
Okay.
And... But I told him if it didn't follow, it didn't go through, I would probably back out, let him back out of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, I hope I'm clear enough.
Any questions? Greg?
Mr. Medgarden, so is your opinion that you have no other use or user for the property?
I've had some interest expressed in it, but I mean, I have nothing in black and white yet. Right now, I'm working on another property on First Avenue Southwest, and the guy can't find help to keep it open. But I think we've resolved that this afternoon now. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Glenn.
It's not easy being a landlord around town.
Mr. Helmers, would you like to address the counsel? Basically what you did at the Planning Commission meeting. When did... Do you remember when you sold the property to Glenn?
When did you buy it, Glenn? Two, three years ago.
All right. Yeah, we were...
I rented it to...
2015.
The Rover.
2015. There you go.
I knew that was only going to be temporary because he is a hail chaser.
They had motorcycles out there for a while. Who owned it then? You did?
I don't know.
Yeah, they had some...
Not that anyone.
Okay.
Just a few. About three and a half years ago, then he bought it.
No, I'd say probably two.
No, it was more than that. But anyway. Hi, I'm Robert Helmers.
I can't remember, but I'm sure it was two.
And I live at 1011 Oakland Place Southeast, and I have no problem with Mr. Sorensen wanting to rezon the property there. But I also own the adjacent properties on the northwest end of that property, so I also have lots that are 150 by 45. And all I ask, in all fairness, I had been in front of the council and rejected on rezoning for commercial three times, and all I ask for is fairness. And I have a bare lot there that's just bare, which is 150 by 45. I'd like to have that zone the same as whatever he gets, whether it's R2 conditional again or whether it's commercial. I just want the same. And the only thing I would ask, that I can have six cars only, Mr. Sorensen says he'd like to have 15 cars at the other lot there, all I ask is I'd have six cars there only on display up in the front north corner, and that would be it. And that's all I ask for, just fairness. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn? We need your name and address, Glenn.
Glenn Thiessen, 1502 Seventh Avenue Northwest. My property abuts the lot in question, and I am to the... Directly to the south of Mr. Helmers' lot. So if he gets rezoned, I'm going to be 50% surrounded by rezon property or non-conforming use property. And my only request right now is that you just affirm the Planning Commission's decision and let the place die a natural death, because I think rezoning is just going to open up a Pandora's Box.
Is that the only business there? I mean, if the car lot... There's nothing else there? Commercial?
Right, no, it's just...
Nothing in it right now. It's empty.
But the adjacent lots, like Mr. Helmers and stuff, there's nothing in any of those right now?
That is a... Bob's lot is... Well, he has two lots. He's got a half-finished house sitting on one, and the other one that was squeaky under all's house was razed, and now the lot is vacant.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Thiessen? Thanks, Glenn. Glenn used to be my lieutenant on the police department. Counsel, what do you think? We can go right down the row, or you could, you know...
I'll kick us off here. Certainly, I'm torn on this, no doubt. You know, I know that I've lived in that area, grew up in that area, I knew it always seems like it has been a car lot and kind of mind its own business, but what I caution and what I think about here is, we have... We put a lot of stock into that future land use map in our comprehensive plan, a lot of work and time goes into that. We also have a property out on 18th that's zoned industrial that has people living on it right now that we are someday probably going to have to, again, look at our map and say, "It's zoned industrial." And that's a big chunk of property that seems to fit industrial, but yet there's a resident still sitting on it. That, given that over our head down the road, thinking about this and giving this a variance, if you will, and rezoning it...
if you will, and rezoning it would cause, I think, a lot of headache down the road for someone that has that big of property sitting on what we've already mapped out as industrial and makes good sense to be that. They would certainly have a few more legs to stand on to come into before us and say, well, now you've done this, you've changed your map, a very thoughtful map, a very thoughtful planning process for future land use. And I go back to certainly, you know, it's certainly, we're not guaranteed at being a car lot as it's been. I get Mr. Sorensen's legitimate. I know Glenn, great people. Honest Bob Elmers, I've known you. These are good people. But I go back to that, first of all, I put a lot of stock into the Planning Commission too, in that they've done their due diligence and come to a vote that says they've got to turn that down for whatever reasons they have. My biggest one is that I put a lot of stock into the planning that went into that future land use map for Austin, and I would hate to gamble on that piece of property out on Eighteenth that is already zoned industrial and what that might look like if we change this.
What else?
I would have to say I agree. I wish that our decisions as a council were as easy as, do you want an empty business or not? But they're never that easy and clear cut. We have to take into consideration that long-term comprehensive plan, which as Councilperson King said, had a lot of thought and intention put into it, and it's established to help us in situations like this when we need to think very much more long-term. So I would go ahead and make a motion to deny the zoning request. I do want to say that I am grateful to Mr. Sorensen and Mr. Medgarden and many others in Austin who are our local developers, really, who are buying property and running businesses and being landlords, you're the backbone of our economy. This is not slight against you at all. It's just trying to honor the work of the Planning and Zoning Commission and our comprehensive plan.
Before we entertain a motion, could we continue speaking on this matter?
Okay, go ahead.
I guess, did you say the zoning ordinance were set up in 1970? Is that correct, Mr. Byer?
That's when Austin's original zoning ordinance was passed. It was zoning became, zoning became kind of a legal thing that was developing in the seventies and Austin followed most municipalities in passing a zoning ordinance at that time. It goes through reviews and revisions about every 10 years or so. Comprehensive map gets redone every so often as well, and that is not all that old in Austin. We did that just a couple of years ago. But yes, zoning has been an issue in Austin for, since the seventies.
Okay, well, in 1970, I was nine years old, so I didn't pay much attention to that stuff at that time, and so I'm not sure what the council had in mind or the Planning Commission had in mind with this property that they thought it would be residential since it's been a business as far as we've heard tonight forever. And I don't see that it would ever conform to residential, this property, for several reasons that we've talked about tonight. And I understand, you know, people are afraid of what might happen if it's not a car lot, but I think we've discussed that too, that I don't think there's a whole lot of other businesses that would probably fit on this property. And if it isn't rezoned, I'm wondering if the neighbors would rather have an empty dilapidated building because it sounds like Mr. Medgarden has no other options at this time or in the foreseeable future, and so you're going to have an empty building sitting there for ever or for a long time until something comes along.
We've got enough of them around town right now. Like I said, Kage is closed up, it's three buildings.
So, I mean, I guess I would be in favor of rezoning this to get something in there and get the property active again.
Okay, anybody else?
You know, this is definitely, you know, it's not an easy cut and dry case because I believe in a lot of what Stephen and Laura are saying, that we do have comprehensive plans for a reason. You know, at the same time, like Jeff, I grew up in Austin since I can remember. It's been, you know, whether it was Car Corner or a different lot, it's been a car lot. And I don't see where, what else it becomes. And, you know, if we're trying to figure out ways to expand our tax base, we're trying to figure out ways to stimulate local business, it sounds like there's things that we could in theory do to maybe restrict it to a car lot at some point in the future from an ordinance standpoint. You know, to me, it would be different if it was an empty lot sitting in the middle of a residential area that we just wanted to put a car lot into. But, you know, 30-plus years of it being a lot that's there, to me, even if it was 12-plus months that it hasn't been used specifically as a car lot, I would agree. I think we've got enough empty buildings right now, and it's not easy, but I would be in favor of granting the rezoning.
I mean, I guess also just another point, like Mr. Byer mentioned, I mean, the comprehensive plan is a fluid document. It's not something that's hard and fast, and it has, does change from time to time, so there's no reason that it can't change for this at this time.
Anybody else in the council?
I guess I'd like to hear from Councilman Baskin. If we do rezone tonight to the Business District, the B2 district, what is the mechanism that you think we can use to then rezone it again in the future to prevent it from becoming an inappropriate use?
I guess that's probably a better question for Holly and for Craig.
Because my understanding is there wasn't one. That was something the Planning and Zoning Commission was asking for alternatives, and we're given none.
As a B2 zoning designation, there's a list of permitted uses that are allowed without any government interaction whatsoever. Then there are a list of conditional use permit uses that would require review by the Planning Commission. But all of those options would be available on this property into the future unless there was an application to rezone it again, which usually you don't see properties attempt to rezone down in intensity. They're always going up in intensity. So going back again to residential would be unlikely. The one option that Holly had mentioned would be a, an RO, which is more of an office, which is more service oriented, things like the plumbing business perhaps, or the roofing business that was there temporarily between the car lot and now might fit into an RO. So there are other commercial uses under RO. They're just the types of uses that have less intensity and less impact on neighbor than we've at least determined car dealerships would have.
Car dealership would not be allowed under RO even with a variance or a non-conforming use?
I think that's right. I don't think even a conditional use permit for a car dealership in RO. It's more for the office.
So the B2 is really the only current option available to rezone it to be able to put a car lot there.
That's right.
But if we go B2, does it still need a variance or a conditional use permit? It's, I mean, even a B2, it's not.
It's going to need a variance and a non-conforming use.
You won't have a conditional use permit, you will have variances because it's not 50 feet from a residential structure, so they'll have to ask for a variance to waive the 50-foot setback requirement for a car lot even after you rezone.
Was there a fencing issue also?
There are fences currently, but there wouldn't be a reason to review that.
No, I don't, I don't think that would be an issue. Just, and then keep in mind that there's also a future request to rezone additional property to this B2 as well. So that would add additional potentially commercial. I mean, I guess, just keep in mind that you'll be making the same analysis, I guess, probably next month.
It does complicate it though. If, so Mr. Elmers is asking, is suggesting that if you grant this, he'll be back at a future meeting asking that his property also be rezoned, and his property is around the corner just a little bit on the north end. Right now, because he has an empty lot and then a house on the next lot, the 50-foot setback could almost be achieved on the north end of this property. But if you rezone his to a car lot, then he'll be close to the next neighbor. And then, so there's, there's a little bit of a sort of succession of variances that would be required. And that doesn't mean, I mean, you're not deciding tonight whether Mr. Elmer's property should be rezoned or not. It's not on the agenda. We haven't put it out legally the way it would need to. There haven't been fees collected for that process. But when you have the neighboring owner saying, if you do this one, I'm going to be next, it does put you into a situation where unless there's something unique about the neighbor's property, you have to explain why commercial at this location makes sense, but commercial at the immediately adjacent lot doesn't make sense. And maybe there are circumstances. It faces the college, it has both residential to its back and residential to its side, but you're, you're creating an environment where you're saying commercial makes sense at this intersection, at this part of town, and it'll, there is a potential for creep.
Well, I think Glenn had a good point. We wouldn't be here tonight if he would have known that this zoning law existed. He would have just stuck half a dozen cars out there and there'd still be a car lot and creep would have it today.
I've actually spoken to Glenn about that. Glenn and I spoke early on when he first purchased that property in detail and at length about what uses were available for that property. I talked to him today on the phone about that and letting him know that, that was my recollection, and he does not recall having that conversation with me.
Mr. Elmers, I'll give you a shot.
Holly, are you saying that if he would, if he would have kept cars on there, that the non-conforming use still would have expired?
If he would have had that, that location has an auto dealer, a car dealership, like a licensed car dealership, he would have been fine. The non-conforming use would not have terminated.
Just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to mention, back in 1975, on the south end of the lot, on Seventh Avenue, there was a used car dealer in there by the name of Wyatt Auto Sales, Jim Wyatt, and he was in there for about a year or so, and then I think he went out, and then I think it was a polished parlor in there in that building. And then in 1978 is when that property was reverted from like a commercial deal to R2 because this lady that owned the property was an older lady, and then it was reverted from like a commercial use to a R2 in 1978. There was a public notice put in the newspaper to that effect, so that's how it got to R2. And then, so when I come in there in 1989, went in front of the council, you know, that's when they decided to go ahead and give me the non-conforming use permit for the used car lot. That's when that took place.
Okay.
Thanks.
Council, anybody else? Grab, do we have a motion or do we start over?
We have a motion.
Do we have the motion? Can you read the motion back?
Motion by Councilmember Helly to deny the zoning request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Do we need to poll that, Tom? Go ahead.
Motion by Councilmember Helly, seconded by Councilmember King to deny the zoning request, so an aye vote is in favor of denying the request. Councilmember Waller.
Nay.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Nay.
Fisher.
Nay.
Baskin.
Nay.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at Large Austin.
Nay.
Motion fails five-two, Your Honor.
We'll entertain further motions. This would be a motion to grant the appeal.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Tom?
So a motion by Councilmember at Large Austin, seconded by Councilmember Fisher to approve the zoning change, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Nay.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Nay.
Councilmember at Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five-two, Your Honor.
All right, I want to thank everybody that came in for this tonight. Not everybody's going to be walking away happy, but you, I guess.
You have the ordinance still.
Oh, I'm sorry, where is this?
The preparation of the ordinance. E B.
Move for preparation of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
It's a motion, all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion by Councilmember at Large Austin, seconded by Councilmember Pashusta to prepare the ordinance, so an aye vote's in favor of such. Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Nay.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Nay.
Councilmember at Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five-two, Your Honor.
See ordinance for publication, adoption and publication of the ordinance?
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Nay.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Nay.
Councilmember at Large Austin.
Aye.
The ordinance for first reading requires a unanimous vote by all in presence, so we do not have that tonight, so the ordinance is not approved on a five-two vote, but it will be reverted to the next council meeting where it just requires a simple majority.
The same vote the next, in two weeks would approve it, right?
If it turns out the same way, yes, Your Honor.
Okay, so does everybody understand that? Didn't pass tonight, but if the same thing happens in two weeks, it'll pass and you'll be, it'll be rezoned. Okay? I want to thank everybody for coming in.
Thank the council.
All right, thank you. And we're going to go back to number seven, pardon?
Yeah.
On the petitions and requests, reviewing a request for $5,002,19 contingency funds for winter downtown planters and decorations. We do have some, Ms. Bell and Lord, you want to, we know what it's about, but why don't you go ahead and explain that way the, get the press on it and maybe.
Salva Lord from the Spam Museum.
Sandra Bell from Twice is Nice.
And we had come across two weeks ago about getting, hoping to get $5,000 for putting up planters in downtown Austin for the winter season. This would be a one-time request, and following this, the money needed for those planters would be added into a, I should say, it's a first-time full request. With next time, we're hoping to have it added into the flower pot, the flower basket request, and have some other funds being made available for it, so we wouldn't be coming to the council for the entire amount. We have in, we have sent in the map for you guys to see, which has all of the planters. There are, turns out, there are 31 planters, so we want to thank Mr. Nelson for helping us count them. We have 29 that we will actually fill, and they will be filled with Byde Berg's Nursery for a total of $5,000 and not a penny more. Second piece of information is that what they are going to be looking like, they have already, a portion of them has already gone up, which is the portion that we actually pretty, we had some of, and we needed to do that because of the winter and before, they needed to get planted before the pots actually froze, so that was an important piece to kind of move ahead. They are not finished yet. There's a lot of the physical decoration. We have a picture of what they, the idea of what they will look like, but maybe Sandy can talk a little bit more about the garnishments of the physical planters.
Did you say you have picked, could you pass over?
Yes, well, yeah.
She can put it on the.
Put it on the overhead.
Here it is. Yeah, and like she said, they're half done, so basically, we have the birch from last year that Park and Rec saved, and then we also have the berries that were saved too. So they have, it'll be a lot taller than that, you know, like the greenery.
And the pots are much bigger.
Yeah, so already the greenery's in, and then the berries are in and the birch, so they just have to go around now and fill the rest of it with the berries and then the red twigs. But all the, all the 29 pots, all of them are on Main Street except for two of them that go down kind of where the coffee shop are. So instead of 26, we knew from last year that there's 29, but we actually found 31.
How long do they stay up?
They'll stay up all the way until the Park and Rec takes them out in the spring.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and they, they lasted very well last year, looked really fall.
So they're kind of winterizer, built for the weather?
Yes, so they're more of a winter pot. It's not going to look Christmasy, it's going to last all the way.
I guess I hadn't realized that, it'll make it all season, really.
Right, right.
And that was the purpose, is we wanted to have something that wouldn't just be available for six weeks. We wanted to have something that would last through February into March.
So this would go up about what time every year if you make this an annual thing?
Yes, so they start coming up right about now. The pumpkins and the hay will come down on the 19th of November, and then this, these pots are done in stages to just kind of, you know, continuously add to them, make them a little more festive as we go along.
Okay, so you'd still do the pumpkins for Halloween and then the transition afterwards?
We would hope, we'll see the.
Or would you combine them somehow?
I would love to do that. If I had my wishes, if wishes were fishes, as they say. So the pumpkins and the hay bales were all paid for between the Spam Museum, Discover Austin, and the Governor's Bezen Hunting Opener. So that total was about, about $500. So it would be very, something fairly easy to do again, but, you know, it's again something that we want to make sure that there's full, there's full support for.
Okay, okay.
Who maintains them?
Everybody loved them, so that was nice.
Who maintains them in the winter? I mean, like who?
Say that one more time.
Who maintains them in the wintertime?
They shouldn't need much maintenance.
They get a foot of snow on them.
Yeah, so they will need some brushing off of the snow.
They're just buried. They, when it snows, they just get buried in the snow.
Yeah, so they'll.
Well, like anything else does, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we kind of go out and brush them off.
And brush them off. So the downtown businesses have been very good about kind of, and we will restate that during our meeting next month, that, you know, if you have a planter near you, to go around and kind of help it, help it look its best.
And you know who you have to approach to get this, I mean, we're already getting requests to send the letters out for flowers, aren't we, Tom, for next year?
One major request went out to, and not including any financial.
Okay, yeah, so if we're going to, you know, that somehow is going to be incorporated into the flowers, that should go out.
We'll move on that with Bonnie now.
Okay, yeah, she'd be the one you need to talk to, because it's kind of her baby. Okay, council, any questions or comments?
I think the only comment I have is I think they're going to look great. I commend you guys for your work with the downtown and the revitalization. I think it's going to look really good. I think, reiterating from our last meeting, this being a one-time request and figuring out the fundraising will be key because I'm sure we'll have some tough budget decisions to make next year, so I don't know that the full amount will be something we can count on.
No, and we completely expect, and let that be written down, that we will not be requesting the full amount next year. It may be either half or low.
Tom, what does the city donate to the flowers? 10?
$19,000. We offset the budget.
Okay, well, any more comments from the council?
Small portion.
All right.
Very good. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now let's see. Number nine. Granted the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for removal of junk and graff, junk graffiti and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 710th Street Northeast to Hagner Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 1804 Oakland Avenue East, the Curscotten Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, C 711 A Street Northeast, the Sandoval Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any citizens here that want to address the council on anything? If not, we want to welcome Irving, our honorary council member, for the next eight week, there are eight or 12 weeks, 12 weeks, I believe. And, is it eight or 12? I can't remember.
12.
And this is his first meeting, so Irving, how do you say your last name?
Edidina.
Okay. That's, could have taken a little practice. Say it again?
Edidina.
Edidina, is that it?
Edidina.
Okay, okay, so we want to welcome you for your first meeting. I'm looking forward to working with you, but we'll talk to you a little bit after the work session to see if, you know, just how you're getting this stuff and how you're enjoying it, but, okay? Otherwise, reports and recommendations, let's start from Paul.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jason. Just following up, so had the opportunity to be out in Washington DC last week. Sarah Karkey from our Human Rights Commission had invited myself and Fatima Sed from Project Fine in Winona. Austin was one of four cities that was asked to come out and meet with congressional delegations, so it was Austin, Salt Lake County, which apparently there's a county and a city, Atlanta, Georgia, and St. Cloud. And so we should feel really good about the welcoming efforts that we're putting together in this community and that the work that so many people in this room and beyond this room are doing is really a model that even major metropolitan areas are really impressed by. And so it was a good opportunity. It's kind of like rolling a rock up the hill, having conversations about workforce and legal immigration with Congress at this point in the year, but it makes us feel really, really functional, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jason. Laura.
I just want to announce that Austin Area Arts is partnering with Spam Post 570, American Legion Post 91, VFW Post 1216, Austin DAVY, and Beyond the Yellow Ribbon to present a special movie celebrating Veterans Day. So it'll be on Friday, November 8th, 6:30 PM at Saving Private Ryan. It's a free will donation to see the movie, and the proceeds are split between all those veterans organizations, so come on out and see it.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Great.
Yes, we got notice on Friday that the Minnesota Senate Capital Investment Committee will be through tomorrow, four to five, actually, 4:05 to be precise, 5:05. Those members are able to join us. Public certainly be welcome to attend, but we'll be visiting about our wastewater treatment plant and our two other bonding projects with them for consideration in upcoming legislative session.
Any reports?
Julie and Stephen have items.
Let's start with Julie. Let's start with Stephen.
I've got it. It took me a moment. Um, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that the library did our community collaboration grant workshop on October 25th. We had 60 participants, about half were Selco library staff and the other half were community members, and the title of the workshop was Advancing Racial Equity, The Role of Libraries and the Communities They Serve. And it was a really, really great day. Everybody, I think, had, we had a good turnout, we had, the presenter was really impressed with the community members that showed up, and it was really, and the, the purpose was to get together and build an introductory understanding for how to talk about operationalizing and organizing for racial equity. And I really appreciate everybody coming, and then our next step is to have, we're going to be watching the documentary Race, The Power of an Illusion, and we're starting that on November 12th with the first episode, so if you're interested, please come on out to the library.
Thank you, Julie. Stephen?
Street projects are wrapping up. Weather is going to be changing on us this week. Wednesday, we have a major change in the weather, and that's kind of going to be shutting us down, but we're planning to open up Oakland Place Southeast, the Railroad Underpass, on Wednesday, hopefully Wednesday morning sometime. Right now, we're looking at just one lane in each direction and then allowing the contractor to continue working on the boulevards and things like that and sidewalks, but that we're looking at Wednesday for opening up the Oakland Place Railroad Underpass.
Great, okay. Only thing I have is I was contacted lately, the Holiday Train is going to be in Austin. If you haven't been to that, it's a lot of fun, and I have never been to one where it was freezing cold, so you know it's going to get cold by then. That's December 6th, from 5:15 to 5:45, and it's a, like a food shelf thing, I think proceeds go to the food shelves. There's going to be a town hall Wednesday, November 6th, this Wednesday, at 6:30 to 7:30 with our Congressman Jim Haggardorn at the Hormel House, and he's asked that I moderate that, so I'm going to make sure Austin's views are heard, and that's about it. I want to, we did get a very nice letter to the paper for one of the Austin crews pulling up a manhole cover and getting a set of glasses for late. I don't even, I haven't really checked in what department, I'm sure the street, Stephen, those must be your people. Yeah, that was good. I mean, we're really proud of our employees. You know, we go through some stuff sometimes in negotiations, but we're really proud of our employees, and we have good reason to be. They, they make us proud, especially by stuff like that. So if there's nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn till Monday, November 18th, 2019, at 5:30 in council chambers. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, suppose we take a short break and meet in the small conference room, go back to the hall.